Okay, it's 7:01. I might call a meeting to order. As you all know, this is the first meeting of the month. It's our business meeting. And the first order of the agenda is questions and comments from the floor. Do you have any?
I have none.
Okay, very good. So then we'll go to the first item on the agenda, which is a report back on Education 2030. And I will start that off with our point. And then, well, let me just say that Cody Lowich, Becky Leece, our house principal, and I went to a New York School Board Association conference called Education 2030. And it was about what we're preparing our kids for. They picked 2030 because kids who are in kindergarten now will graduate in 2030. And it was talking about what we need to be thinking about to get our kids ready for 2030 when they all graduate. And so I'm going to start off with a kind of a Cliff Notes version of a presentation that started the conference by Bill Daggett, who is a nationally-known educational innovations expert and specialist. He speaks all over the country. And I'm just going to give kind of a Cliff Notes version of his presentation. And then Becky is going to give more, talk more about the educational consequences of what I'm going to start off with. So, okay, so what he did, he started off with is just talking about, you know, like it was a self-explanatory slide. There wasn't cell phones. There wasn't iPads. There wasn't Facebook when the graduating class of 2018 was in kindergarten. And then he did a funny thing. He talked about, he actually started with phones. I cut out a bunch of slides. Started with phones, you know, the kind where he went like this, hello, this is your caller. And each time he showed us a phone, he showed us a picture of a classroom. And it was a classroom with all the desks in a row. And then he said, then in 1950s, we went to that type of phone. Then he showed a picture of a classroom with all the desks in a row. And then he said, and then we had email in 1970s. And then he went to a picture of a classroom with all the desks in a row. And then he said, now we have cell phones. And he had another picture of a classroom with all the desks in a row. And his point was that we're making some changes, but in a lot of ways, we're still teaching in the way that was done in the last century. And it was, he did it very, much more amusingly than I did. Okay, then there was the computer digital revolution. He showed us again that, you know, I didn't realize this. Name frames were 44. There were desktops computers in 1975. I didn't think they were that old. Because I know, I was in vet school in the 1980s, late 1980s. And I had a Wang word processor. And I thought I was so cool. And its memory was 400K. And I said, man, I'm really, I'm really the leading edge here. But, you know, he just talked about how, you know, it's become obviously a necessary tool. And then he talked about how the computer digital revolution has reshaped the world in terms of the way we work, interact. I don't have to read it through shop, where we get entertainment and news, obviously with all social media. And then he started talking about the nanobio tech revolution, which will reshape our world going forward. And again, how we work, how we interact, how we shop, and our healthcare.
No, I know. I'm sorry.
And then he talked about what students would need to know and be able to do in order to be there with the reshaped world, you know, to be able to succeed in the reshaped world. One of the examples he gave, driverless cars is what's coming. And it's going to really make a huge difference in some of the jobs that are available and things people can do. Shirts that are never need to be laundered. They will never get dirty. They will never smell. And again, that's going to really change the clothing industry and the way that we deal with fashion and so forth. Tires that never wear out. You never have to replace a tire. You'll have a tire on your car for the entire life of the car, and then put it on your next car. And so then he talked about that, you know, the world of bits, you know, from the computer world will be brought into the physical world as part of this biotech and nano revolution. And he called it fab labs, where they have, you know, what's listed there. 3D printers, laser cutting tools, and so forth and so on. And he said, he gave Barcelona as an example, where they've actually had the beginnings of some of these labs, and they're making almost anything they need there in Barcelona, you know, that so they don't have to import things and buy things elsewhere. And obviously, this is going to have huge impacts in terms of world trade and manufacturing and so forth. And so now, before the nanotech revolution, things were produced in a factory, shipped via boat, trail, rail, etc., etc. And that's all jobs and, you know, careers that people had. And he said it's going to have a huge impact, you know, on delivery services, on transportation, infrastructure, energy, and malls. I don't want to, and I'm reading it. I hate to do that, but anyhow. But you can, you understand that, and then 25, okay. And he said 25% of shopping malls will be gone in five years because of this change in the way people are shopping and living. Then he talked about a few examples of some of what the nanotech revolution will bring. And I did, there was a lot, a bunch of them, but I just gave a couple that I thought were kind of interesting. One would be self-repairing concrete. And he had to show you a piece of concrete. She'd order concrete. No, but what the deal would be is that it would actually be bacteria baked into this concrete that would, cracks develop, and water would get into the concrete. The bacteria would be activated, and it would self-heal. They would produce a phosphorus material that would actually seal the cracks. So you would not have to repave things. It would just be perpetual, you know. So that's one example he gave. And obviously, that would have huge significance. And then he talked about a bunch of things in dentistry, disease, and medicine. And he gave one of the examples. Oh, yes, good. So first, he showed this slide about how big it's part of our economy. Go ahead. Medicine is. And the thing that, you know, you can read all those, but the thing that was most amazing to me, he said if US healthcare spending were a country, it would be the fifth-largest economy in the world. I mean, that's how much we spend on healthcare. And I can tell you that of the developing countries, we spent 18% of our GDP on healthcare. The next closest is Switzerland, which spends 11%. And they have universal healthcare, where everyone is public, where obviously we don't. But, you know, it's a daunting, daunting figure. So one of the things he talked about in terms of the nanotech revolution and the biotech revolution are these capsules that would actually be inserted into people's bloodstreams. And they would do things like they would identify plaques and ream them out. They would identify aneurysms and seal them. And they would, you know, deliver, or do these other things that are listed there, which are, you know, incredible advances that'll change the whole nature of, you know, the medical practice. And as a result, he said, the biggest areas for growth in the medical field are not going to be doctors, but bio-nanotech engineers and computer scientists. Because that's where the future of most, much of medicine is going. According to him anyhow, and I think he's pretty, pretty spot on. Okay, and then they talked about some new and emerging technologies. Like this is a thing that would be actually surgically attached to your head for people who are deaf. And it would be wired to the auditory center of the brain so that someone who is deaf would now be able to hear. And then the other side of it is, this is for someone who's lost the ability to speak, who again, it would be wired to the speech part of the brain. And they would be able to speak because the, this machine, this machine would pick up those things and do what your vocal cords would normally do. And so they would be able to speak again. And so then the question, the big question at the end of all of this was the class of 2030. What do they need to know and what do they need to be able to do in order to be able to succeed and thrive in this new emerging world that we don't even know all the pieces of or even close to it at this point? And Becky will answer that question.
So after we learned about all of the changes, they talked about what we need to think about as educators to, in their words, meet, serve the changing student population and remain flexible and adaptable at the same time. And so I kind of did it in two ways. I shared some of the ideas they said and then included some things that we're already doing to try and meet those needs. So obviously, the big focus is on life-ready learning. Being able to do things like working as a team, cooperating together, being effectively, being able to work effectively in a group, time management, effectively communicating. And they did talk a lot about those social emotional skills that students will need to be able to do all of those things. Because when you're working with a group and trying to solve a problem, right, you need to be able to manage all of that through your social emotional skills as well. And they talked a lot about really being student-focused. That student-centricity of learning on their own terms and having autonomy in not only in what they learn, but in how they, they learn. And feeling empowered to make those choices. And a lot of what we talked about, Cody and I talked about after it, is looking at each student individually and what they need and almost that coaching mindset in teaching the way we coach. Each student has a set of skills. How do we meet their needs? How do we help them move forward? And so that was a big part of it, down that individualized structure. They talked a lot about the career in technical education because it promotes critical thinking. It works with high-level problem-solving, creativity, as well as those employability skills. That connects right to the work-based learning that they talked about because kids want to do, students want to do things that seem relevant and applicable to what they're interested in, but also what they can see themselves doing. And so that also connected to project-based learning. And so some of the examples that Cody and I talked about were, for example, in his algebra class, he had the students think as if they were business owners. And they, how much would you pay an employee? How much would it cost you to rent a space? How much would you charge for whatever your service or product is? And then they use their algebra to do the math and figure out how many employees could you afford and still make a profit? And what could your profit be? And how would you, what things could you adjust to affect that profit margin? And in the same vein, he had them look at what makes a successful business owner. So they looked at some business owners and said, what are the qualities that these people have that make them successful? So those are things that are already happening. And Cody had some other examples that he's doing, and I know we have a ton that are happening. And I also connected it to, we've talked a couple of times about the pathways we're going to offer next year. One in construction technology, renewable energy, and sustainable building, which is again, moving more towards some of those things that Bill Daggett talked about. Because it's not the same to be in construction today that it was 10, 15 years ago. And one of the benefits of the pathway that connects to all of this is that interconnected academic-to-elected classes that all revolve back around that theme and that career. The idea that our kids will have that experiential learning. They'll get connections to not only post-secondary education, but training and hopefully apprenticeships within that field. And then again, the support that develops their career and life skills when they're beyond us, because they're having those experiences in high school. And obviously, a big part of it was access to technology. And they talked about students having equal access and the importance of that to sort of level the playing field for students who may not otherwise have it. Obviously, with our efforts to go one-to-one, that will be a big part for us in being able to do that for students. And then the professional development to help teachers use it most effectively in their, in their classrooms. And again, we talked about some examples of where students in our classes were creating professional websites that they could eventually share with someone if they were applying for a job. And again, it's also balancing helping our students realize the appropriate use of technology, time and place, right? We had a little joke going on about Fortnite detox. We were talking about between eight and three. But the idea that, yes, you have access to all these things, but time and place and how you use it, what you use it for, all of those things are really important in terms of how we work with our students. And of course, we have our CSI program that we've talked about before. And I know Mrs. Jones has been here to talk about too, which really is student-driven. The kids pick their projects. They pick their focus, something that they're excited about, passionate about. And then they really spend a lot of time working with it, which is one of the reasons we are pushing to create that computer science pathway. And when we see what Bill Daggett's talking about in terms of even the jobs in medicine connecting to computer science, we know how beneficial that can be for our students. And so in the pathway, our students will be able to have job shadow experience, have internship experience, do mock interviews, while they also have all of that experience in computer science, which will hopefully make them ready for what those jobs will be in the future. And then we'll just keep going.
So any questions about 2030? All right, thank you. Next point on the agenda is a report from our student representative, but unfortunately, Olivia's sick today. So she will not be here and will put her report over to the, to the next meeting. So the next thing then is a board calls update.
So there are some things that are different, but I'm going to ask Patty to go right to the bottom. You can read all the rest. For the big capital update, late last week, I was informed that our expenditure review of the SSIP plan was done after nine months. Yay! There were a couple of revisions that had to be made. And so the revisions are made. The plan is resubmitted. And we will see what state ed says after that. But that is like the big thing since the last meeting. And that's really exciting. I'm going to then turn over to Chris Semenit a little bit because the tech committee met on Monday. As you know, connected to this is very exciting. Our original intent was to do a full district implementation of one-to-one. However, given our budget situation, bless you, now and in the future, we're going to have to rethink that and do more of a rollout because it is a reimbursement program. District spends the money. We get reimbursed. Once you spend an initial allocation, you can use the reimbursement money to keep going. So on Monday, the tech committee met, and their task was...
On Wednesday they met.
Or when, I'm sorry, Wednesday.
And we essentially developed the first, really two phases of a four-phase rollout for bringing the one-to-one initiative to the district. Really, the third and fourth phase kind of fall in quite simply because the, we're essentially bringing the one-to-one to certain grade levels across the district, but then also enriching the other grade levels that aren't going one-to-one right away with additional Chromebook labs. And then with the, as we recoup that first expenditure, we will, you know, make the second purchase. We will go one-to-one to more grade levels, continue to enrich the other grade levels with more devices via mobile cards that can be signed out. Essentially, by the third part of the rollout, we would be fully integrated one-to-one from K to 12. And then the very, the last phase would be buying that overaging Chromebook devices and iPad devices for breakage, the overaging cases for broken cases, things like that. And then the other big chunk of smart, smart devices, the smart IFPs. So in each stage, we really tried to maximize the student impact while also bringing a couple of the classroom impact, the IFP devices. And we left a big chunk of those extra things for the final purchase. Phase three and phase four just has to be finalized by the technology committee. But phase one and phase two is completely done. Once I get the final quotes in from CDW and Dell, I'll put all that together, and then we'll be reported in public consumption.
I'm sorry, because if you, the first phase, what grades are going to be starting?
If you give me 30 seconds, I can pull that out. So the consensus from the, from the tech committee was to spread it out really across the entire district, not to concentrate in one building. So the plan would be that East Hill, 4th and 5th grade would go one-to-one. Middle School, 8th grade would go one-to-one. And High School, 9th grade would go one-to-one. So one device every student plus overage. At East Hill, there's currently a 4th and 5th grade shared mobile card. There's also a 2nd and 3rd grade shared mobile card. The 4th and 5th grade card would be repurposed to one of the other grade levels. So each grade level would have a dedicated card. At the middle school, we currently have one mobile card. That would be dedicated to either 7th or 6th. We would order one more mobile card with 30 units. That would be dedicated to the other grade level. Very similar structure with the high school. There's one current mobile Chromebook lab. That would be either dedicated to a grade level or a wing of the building. And we would order two more additional labs. So there would essentially be a full lab for each wing or for each grade level. And then to finalize that, that first purchase, we would order two of the smart IFP interactive flat panel boards. And that basically brings that purchase to 25% of the total funds. So we tried to break it down to basically exactly that 25%.
Any other questions?
Did, did the technology committee look at the curriculum integration after the rollout of machines or not yet?
Not yet. We tried to figure out, there's, the professional development part of it is taking place before we'll be here. The, we have secured the entry-level Google training. I know Mr. Verdi has brought up a concern with having it late in the summer. So we're actually going to be able to offer that two days after school ends this year. So staff who take part in that would have the whole summer to work with technology. The current Chromebooks are available for sign-out as they were last summer. Teachers want to get acquainted with them. Many of the functions can be done with their laptop. You just use the Google Chrome system. The other big thing with PD is over April break. Once the teachers come back, the full online platform will be ready for teacher consumption. So if they already have that baseline comfort with Google or with their smart board, they can cater their own online CPE-approved hybrid learning, and they can start doing that on their own. So that will be up and running when they come back on Monday 6th.
Could I, I just want to ask, because in math and science, when you have the accelerated kids and they're all next, they have 9th and 10th graders in the same class. And so same thing is with math, where English and social studies are individualized grade level. Would it be possible to consider having at least one of those Chromebook carts in our end, like science and math maybe?
There's a couple of different models that I've seen used. In the middle school, we're a small entity. It's easy to assign, you know, Chromebook lab to a grade level because that cohort of kids is always together. One of the things I actually spoke to Ms. Leece about is maybe doing it more by wing or by floor. So, you know, the math and science wing has a lab available that stays in that little L right there. The social studies wing would have, you know, a cart over there downstairs in the ELA, et cetera, et cetera. It's just, it's another way to think about doing it. Ultimately, it deploys similarly, but there's less congestion of hauling them around.
Yeah, I like the 9th grade, you know, give it to all the 9th grade and then just have available for those kids that are maybe, and maybe you have five kids at 10th graders who would have it, they would have access to one.
And there would...
I've been looking forward to this for so long.
I know. And the other good news is we do have existing infrastructure. So the library still would have those units available that students could be able to sign out. You know, we're saying, you know, a class lab of 30, but in reality, there's not any classes, any nor, with the exception of like a music class. There's not many classes that are above 30 students or even approaching 30 students. So there's extras kind of built in there. But the libraries would be able to be used as a hub for those students.
It's really hard to get, get out of those. It's really hard to add those because everybody's using them in the library rather than in a classroom.
And we're phasing in, let's see here, I mean, round numbers just in this initial purchase, about 140 more Chromebooks just to the high school. So just in terms of the number of devices that are there, that's going to increase pretty quickly. And we're hoping that, what we've been told by NAREC and the consensus kind of out there is that initial purchase, when we submit that paperwork, it takes about 60 days. In a perfect world, if we get the go-ahead before July 1, we should be able to have the first two phases of devices in hand by the start of school. So now we're talking, you know, another grade level at the high school, or two grade levels at the high school, another grade level at the elementary school. So it very quickly scales. So, I mean, if that 60-day purchase period stays true, in less than half a year, we'd be able to be all through, through all four phases. So this, it shouldn't be something that's drawn out over years, like it should happen...
I'm just worried about those 10th graders seeing the same grade with the 9th graders saying, that's a van, that, and I don't.
The goal is nine and 10 levels together. So all of that. I would suggest we just offer, the tech committee goes back and takes a look at that suggestion and also then starts to consider the curricular impact. So the tech committee's got some more work to do. And we don't know what the turnaround time will be once it goes into, back into expenditure review. But I doubt, I'm hopeful it's not going to be another nine months.
Okay, so can we go to the rest of the roll?
The rest of it is not that different than the last time. On the April 22nd, Mrs. Van Huse and Mr. Fitzgerald and I will conduct interviews for the superintendent secretary position. So that's a change. Tonight, you're going to hear the report from the secondary scheduling committee meeting and the technology. Those are the three updates from a couple of weeks.
I have one question. I don't know why this did come to my mind previously, but when I read it for this meeting, I wondered, the superintendent secretary position, I'm assuming, would still be the secretary of the chair?
Correct.
So I was wondering whether we, as a board, wanted to have somebody in that interview process.
I don't really feel it's necessary. I mean, just the primary compatibility needs to be superintendent. And it's not necessarily the same position. It depends on how it works out. Just Patty Green to be the board secretary is valid. It could be something different as well if that's what you desire. It's up to you, Glenn.
Just as a point of information, it's a stipend position. So it's not inclusive. So it is an additional stipend too. So different districts do it different ways.
So it literally could be...
It literally could be a separate person. Sometimes it's the business official, when you have a business official under civil service and state ed law. Sometimes it's a part-time clerical person. Sometimes it's another clerical person within the district. The model here has been, the superintendent secretary also receives a stipend to function as the board clerk.
Any other discussion on that?
I don't know if the board really needs to be involved. That wouldn't be opposed to it. It's a board order.
I thought it might be a good idea just to have an extra person, but...
Unless, is there somebody on the board that goes strongly that they want to participate in that? Because I don't want to say, yeah, let's do it.
Right. I know I don't have the time to do that, but if somebody else wants to.
Retired, retired, no.
All right.
Okay, so we just go ahead and play. Is that it then?
That's it.
So the next point on the agenda is scheduling committee report.
Yes. All right. So tonight, we're, the secondary scheduled committee is pleased to provide a report to the Board of Education of the activity that we have going on, or we have had going on. We have five, four people, including myself, who'll be providing information this evening. As you will recall, the task the board gave us was to produce an evidence, produce evidence-based recommendations for an optimal schedule for our secondary students. We also included colleagues from the middle school because of the connection of shared staff. So this evening, Tracy Evans will provide an overview of the survey. Tim Field will provide an interview, or an overview, excuse me, overview of our 10-iteration process. Kate Lowry will provide some information about prototype 10. And then Patty Prime will share with us our next steps as a committee. The committee has worked very hard. Committee has gone through a lot of bags of Dove chocolate in our work. And so I'm going to turn it over this time to Ms. Evans, who's going to share with us how we gather our information through our surveys.
So we had, do you want me to, I can see, right? Okay. So we surveyed four different groups of people. We had our alumni, students, teachers, and parents. And we were all involved in setting up the surveys. And obviously, there was mixed results, depending on who you were in all areas. And so at the top, the survey data results we're trying to meet. When we were going through this, each time, those were our goals. So... So long lunches, longer lunches, students really wanted that, everybody wanted that. Designated extracurricular, whether it be A M, P M or both, we toyed with both of those ideas. Athletic dismissal, that was a huge problem in that at the end of the day, the same students were being released early from the same classes, missing class time. So that was huge. Guided studies, across the board, everybody liked it, wanted to keep that idea. Student access to electives. It was, again, the students, at courses, the students were able to take. They were happy with the electives we had, with all the variety we had, loved it. Problem was the flexibility. So that was really one of the things, and probably Patty's going to address that, is the flexibility of this schedule. So student access to electives. B O Cs, that was huge, 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 huge in our talk, especially the B O Cs being involved in the extracurricular, the clubs and activities, because right now they can't. Also, the P Tech, I think, kids. We talked about the availability of them too. So clubs and activities, but also, I'm sorry, the B O Cs, access to teacher support, the guided studies, they didn't have that. The faculty staff, lunch options and different class time options. And we've really come up with a nice flexibility in this schedule, I think.
I think that was about it for the results. Thank you. So Tim's going to talk a little bit about the process and the ten iterations.
So, as it turns out, it's not actually all that easy to come up with a schedule. We started with a couple of options that people have presented, and then we kind of hashed it out into one idea. I think that was number four.
Yep.
And then we realized we had this issue that we had to deal with, so then came along the number four, point one, and then mentioned five, et cetera. So yes, we're up to ten, and this is actually ten A now, we're at, ten A. So there's a lot of issues that we have to take into consideration. Transportation of students before and after school, transportation of students going to and from B O Cs. I guess they need to have lunch too, so we'll think about that. And it's just, was a real labor trying to get all these different details, considering all the stuff from the variety of surveys that we've had and make this work. We're so close. We may have ten B, I don't know. But I think we're doing really good work with this, and the big key is having the flexibility for all of the students. So I'm really happy to be working with these people, but I think, like I said, we're definitely on the right track.
Thanks. So we are at ten, ten A, ten B, ten something. And so Kate's going to share with us some of the specifics about this model that we are currently working with, this prototype. Thanks, Kate.
I'm going to piggyback off of a lot of what they've already been saying, a lot of some of the struggles, some of the struggles we had. The B O Cs kids would leave classes early, not get lunch, became a bit of an issue. The way the schedule is set up, at least in the current, what we have right now, both the morning and afternoon B O Cs kids would have the opportunity to at least grab a lunch and not be super late to class. It allows them to have the four classes in the afternoon as well as the four in the morning and not come in super late and be disrupted or just disrupt their own learning because then they have to settle and eat and function. It also allows that middle time to have other classes, potentially maybe mini-courses, maybe longer courses, but it gives some more flexibility to the schedule to allow kids some extra alternatives, right, to their learning styles. I have a lot of B O Cs kids specifically, and they never get the chance to get help. They were completely removed from being actively involved in clubs as well as getting the assistance they might need. So by having that afternoon period, even the afternoon B O Cs kids come back a little earlier than they have to leave, it gives them that access. So they can stop in, even if it's quick, a quick question is better than not even getting the chance to have that face-to-face meetup. I think we've covered it. Yes?
Great, thanks, Kate. And so we still have a little more work to do. We have some next steps. Patty's going to share our next steps.
So you're probably looking at the schedule thinking, "Well, it looks like the same exact schedule, just seventeen minutes added to the end of the day." But it was really a shifting of that, the couple of minutes off of each class, getting those periods in the middle of the day, a little bit longer lunch, because that was the number one concern of every single student, alumni, everybody. You want to have a longer lunch. But it's really about that flexibility, about the usage of the time, not so much what that schedule structure looks like, but that we could use four and five A to make a little bit longer class. And so now, the next step is to see what works, running it through school tools. That's up for our schedulers to get that to work and to make sure that that would work. And then if it doesn't, then we're back to the drawing board and just tweaking it and to making sure it works. So does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Yes?
I do, yes. I was looking at the possibilities on the back, and I was confused by the six A and the six B, because I didn't see that on here.
Well, you know, you have a class period that is forty minutes. We toyed with this, that if you had, it's, yes, it's six minutes long, it's forty minutes, our sixth period. But what happened was, we thought that maybe those B O Cs kids coming back could get a lunch in the first twenty minutes. It's not technically a six A and a B, but they could go in.
On one version, that's a left wing assignment. On one version, we had a five A B and six A B.
Right.
That's where-
And I think then it became, it could be the B.
I have another question. How many students do we have in B O Cs in the morning and in the afternoon that are being kept?
About fourteen, there's thirty-four kids coming.
Five total this year?
And so kind of split that in half, right?
And my other question is, has anybody talked with the A D about, for next year, obviously, I don't think it'll be done this year, but for next year, in terms of trying to schedule the, when the transportation happens for the athletic contests? So this way, they're not leaving before two forty, so kids are not missing important time.
And nobody likes to hear in the past, but it used to be that no bus is left before two thirty-seven when the last class happened. So you just have to make that a policy, say, "You do not leave before two forty."
Well, you can if our contests are local. So some of our contests are quite far away now, and that is different than in the past. So yes, we try to do that now to the degree that we can, depending upon where the contests are. It's primarily, that sometimes, but not very often, but sometimes we do have to leave a little bit sooner than that.
No, but I'm wondering, well, this seems like that would help-
Oh, it's going to help it a lot.
It would help that a lot. So, you know, they can just make that policy. Well, I mean, if they're going an hour and a half away, they're still going to get there at four fifteen, and most of the time, they don't start until four thirty.
Right. It depends on the contest and wherever we're headed. So yes, we try to do that now. So if you were on the Schedule Committee, if you're on Schedule Committee, raise your hand, because I don't want to forget anybody. So all these folks, if you look around, are folks that have been on this, plus some other friends. So they've worked really hard. We also had some middle school individuals. Laurie Shaker, Greg Batanza also joined us. So it's been a great group, but we're not quite done yet. But this is a conceptual model that we could share with you and that we met our deadline. Because I wanted to put another checkbox on that gold sheet.
Me too.
Thanks, everybody, for everything.
I've got just a couple of questions, just briefly. How does this work with shared staff, any from middle school, high school or elementary? Will it affect that?
The times still align pretty closely. As it is right now, our building starts at eight, the high school starts at seven fifty. That pretty much stays status quo. So there is like a ten-minute time adjustment. Everyone has basically that travel period, grace period, coming up or coming down. One potential model that we had talked about, just with the potential where we put music, one person could have like a twenty-three or twenty-four minute travel, but it's not like someone's up against the five-minute wall trying to get from building to building. So it's very similar to the current time.
All right, you mentioned music. So when typically will most of the music classes happen, like A M or chorus? I mean, is that during the middle of the day so you can capture the kids who are B O Cs?
We are looking at some really interesting options. How's that? Is that a good way to say it, Tim? We don't want to promise something until we run the model and see if it works. But we got an idea that we, that everybody's very excited about.
What time do the kids that go to their afternoon B O Cs, what time does that bus leave? Is that around eleven?
The PM B O Cs leave at, well, we're talking about adjusting the schedule. This year, it's ten fifty. It would be a little different in this model. We are looking at maybe moving that to ten forty-five in this model.
All right.
So that there's a little bit of time built in, as Kate said, to grab a lunch. Because as Tim said, they think they have to eat. We're still going to work on B O Cs.
The B O Cs bus is, on both directions, is a real constraint.
Yeah.
There's just no way around it.
It's a really hard-
So we will give another report, because many of the folks in the audience and on the committee are here regularly with us. So as we run the models, we'll go back and let you know how it goes. But who knows, everybody, it's been a lot of hard work, a lot of hours and a lot of math.
Well, when we asked you all to do this, I had no idea that it would be ten-plus iterations, but I think it's really exciting and important. And I'm looking forward to the final iteration and seeing it. So that would be great. Thank you. Okay, the next thing is the H M B O Cs Administrative Budget Board Election.
It has to be held on April seventeenth, so we can give you the time, that's-
Okay, we want to do it in the morning. Does that be the best to do? You have to do it on that day.
Yes.
It should be all at five A B.
Do we have a ballot yet?
Yes, you should, yeah, send it, post it again.
To us or post somewhere?
I couldn't do it in the evening, I explained to you.
I can't either, unless it's after nine, because I can't meetings.
So what, people like to do in the morning?
Seven.
Yeah, there's no-
At least three.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's a contested issue, so. If you, yeah, I can't do it in the morning, but if you guys can, I'll do it in the morning.
Do you need it in the morning, do you start at seven fifteen?
Yes.
All right, so seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
Okay, the next thing is the budget. Okay, well, budget is always a very difficult task and a very important task, obviously, for our district. It became a very daunting task once we got the information that our healthcare costs could be over twenty-seven percent this year, which basically blew a half-million-dollar hole in our budget. We've really worked very hard to try and deal with this issue and to avoid the possibility of having to do a layoffs or anything of that nature. We also got a whole number of suggestions from some of the staff and others. And I just want to say that we went through each and every suggestion very carefully, and the ones that we felt we could take action on, we had made a list of them, and actually ended up saving about a half-million dollars by some savings. And we're going to go through each and every one of those in a little while after we have an overview of the budget. This year, it looks like it'll be okay, but we're going to be using a significant amount of fund balance. And looking forward to 2021 is when it's going to be crunch time, because we're not going to have any significant fund balance left to work with at that point. And so it's going to be a very difficult budget year next year, because we really, the thing I'm very proud of and happy about this year is we're able to avoid any cuts in academic programs, which is wonderful for our students. What is going to be daunting next year is we're going to have a big hole to fill. Unless we could come up with some way to find some more funds, either through healthcare savings or something of that nature, because we're counting on basically getting the same budgetary increase as we normally get, looking for it next year's, you know, the 2021 budget. That's going to be crunch time for us unless we can come up with some solutions. And that's when we will be faced with a daunting task of even considering some staff reduction. And so I'm hoping that we can work together and avoid that scenario, because it happened in 2009 where we had to lay off seven people, and I really don't want to revisit that, if there's any way that we can avoid that. So that being said, I'll hand it over to Leah to give an overview, and then we'll go through that list of, you know, point by point of some of the suggestions that were made and some of the things we looked into and some of the decisions that were made.
So this is the final summary sheet. If you go to the last column, you'll see, anything that has parentheses means it's reduced. So it's a safe, it's less than it was last year. So if you look at the eighteen, nineteen to nineteen twenty differences, that's in the last column there. So you'll see that our, we already went through, our health insurance is the biggest increase, our special tuition, our contractual obligations make up pretty much any increase in our budget. And our budget to budget is actually down by two hundred thousand. So we've done a lot of work over the last couple of weeks, looking at every single line item and where we can, you know, change things up. So you'll see that the gap on the bottom is still about one hundred thousand dollars that we'll have to use in fund balance.
That's assuming the three and a half percent tax-
Yes, if you do three and a half percent tax increase.
Which would be within our tax cap for this year. That is our tax cap this year.
Can I say a comment? So if you look at those increases and decreases, we kind of standardly checked, and basically, if you add together the special ed, the benefits increase, the contractual obligations, the retirement incentives and special ed, that's more than the, more than the difference in our budget. So that adds up. That adds up to more than what we've, we've actually reduced the budget more than what those increases are. So we are going into next year negative compared to coming into this year, when you take into account those increases that we have to absorb. So we've actually cut the budget lower than it was this year. Is everybody following?
So this just shows what our fund balance is for the next three years, based on the budget for nineteen twenty. So the next year, at the end of June twenty twenty, our fund balance will be about six hundred and fifty thousand. And then doing a little projection for the year after, our fund balance is pretty much gone, there's only forty-six thousand dollars left. fund balance is pretty much gone at only forty-six thousand dollars. Based on the same health insurance and contractual obligations.
That again assumes a zero budget from this year, which means it's a zero budget from what we're putting forward. So that means there's nothing to.
Other, other than contractual.
Other than contractual increases.
And the four, and a projected fourteen percent increase in healthcare, which, you know, is just a guess, but, you know, it's just what we're going to.
Anything else? Any questions?
And one, um, and this is using the ERS reserve to the next couple of years.
Yeah, if we, if we didn't use that, there's no way we could make this work.
Okay, any questions, comments to this point? Okay, so now the next thing we'll do is go through, um, the list. Okay, the, um, like I said, we went through each and every, um, suggestion, both that we came up with, obviously, but also that we were given either from the faculty or support staff, the administration, whoever we got them from, we, we didn't discard anything without carefully examining it. And so the board hasn't seen this yet, so we're going to have to go through each and every one so that we're all, you know, up to speed on it.
Basically, this is the finance committee reporting to the board now because this is the first time you guys have seen it.
So these are all the reductions that we came up with and I'll, what I, I think I'll do is, um, I'll just do one at a time and maybe ask if there's any questions so that we are clear about each one. Um, in athletics, we, um, are proposing to eliminate golf. Um, we are proposing to reduce uniform purchases, eliminate, uh, eliminate cross-country Nordic skiing and eliminate the JV football scrimmages. I'd just like to indicate about the JV football scrimmages for clarity. They don't play any actual games, they're scrimmages and we've had to travel tremendous distances of, to, to participate in those scrimmages. They don't even keep, they're not even allowed to keep score in them. Um, and it's not that those students participating in that would not have football to participate in. Um, the ninth graders could participate in the modified and the tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders could participate in varsity. So they'd still have the opportunity to play football. It would just be a savings to the district of sixty-eight hundred dollars and that's what we're proposing, um, in, in that area. Apparently, uh, speaking to Nick Fitzgerald, our incoming superintendent, he said that this is very widespread and a lot of schools are eliminating JV for that same reason that there's just not enough competitions. You have to travel tremendous distances and, um, and a lot of schools, obviously, are feeling some of the same crunch that we are.
When can we comment on this?
Anytime. So let's do athletics.
So, so the athletics, okay. My, just food for thought, some, some things that concern me is that you're eliminating golf and Nordic skiing, which, you know, this, they're like two to three month, um, sport seasons and even though it's only, you know, twenty-one kids, those are lifelong sports. Those are sports that kids can play for their whole lives, um, unlike, you know, most kids don't play football their whole lives, you know, that kind of thing. Um, so I just think that we're eliminating that for, for a, a group of kids that, um, maybe aren't as athletic in other areas. And then I also just want to compare it to, and I'm, I'm a volleyball person, okay? I used to coach it, but there's eleven students, when you look at the volleyball numbers that are on here later on, there's only eleven students in the volleyball program. So at, at the high school, um, level that are signed up. So it's the same numbers, but we're keeping that. So I'm just wondering if maybe we can.
Move that cost per student.
Okay. I'm just wondering if maybe we can combine with, for a plane like we do or cross-country or golf and, uh, and we're skiing to try and.
The only thing that, the only thing that the reminding would do is split the cost with the coach because you're going to have the same students involved, so the same cost for the actual sport doesn't go away.
Right. Well, I'm just wondering if maybe, I don't, I don't know, just maybe, I don't know how much volleyball costs, so I don't know if that's the same for eleven students as it would be for, um, golf and skiing, but that would be, I'm just trying to keep it fair, um, in terms of that, so I just, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts, but I think that's something we need to consider.
I would agree with you. I mean, now, obviously, this is going to be tough for all these decisions, but I like to see comparison and, you know, maybe if they have it.
Right. I mean, I don't know how many kids. I don't know how many kids are in wrestling. I don't know how many kids are in, you know, I don't know. Swimming, you know, I mean, obviously, we have some sports that have, definitely have more, um, participation, but, um, it's the same way if you look at BOCs and what we're doing with scheduling. We've got seventeen kids in the morning, seventeen kids in the afternoon and we're, we're trying to make sure that all of those kids get, um, the academic needs that they need. Obviously, that's different from athletics, but we're talking about numbers of kids, so it's different.
All right, well, what I'd like to suggest is that we, we go through, you know, ask questions as we go along.
Yep.
Let's go through the whole thing and then we could have a discussion about any issues that we might have to have a vote on individually.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just putting it out there.
Yes, okay. So move right along. Then we have, um, BOCs curriculum position. Um, we would eliminate that and that would be a net savings of fifty-eight thousand dollars and we'll develop, um, other strategies to provide that same curriculum coaching, um, resource. Um, the CTE program, Career Technical Education Program at BOCs, um, BOCs reduced the cost of that by thirty thousand, so that was a savings. Um, the, um, English as a new language position, number seven, um, that is going to be eliminated and we're going to fill it internally. Uh, we were able to, to propose that because we advertised for it after BOCs advertised for it and we got no response, so then we are legally able to do that. And, um, we are going to split that position with the school family facilitator. We'll do that part, uh, half time and it will, that will create a savings of forty-five thousand dollars to the district. Um, our communication service, um, we were on tier two, uh, for services for our website, our Facebook page, uh, PR, communications, et cetera, and, um, we went to tier one, which would be a savings of twenty-two thousand three hundred dollars. Again, anytime anyone has questions, just shout, shout.
What does that mean?
Means we get less support.
Instead of two and a half days, it's basically two years. Right? Um, we are eliminating, proposing to eliminate the Catholic Charities contract. Um, there is a counselor that, um, who appeared for, um, several days a week that would no longer be here and we are proposing to, um, have existing personnel on the BOCs counseling units. That's in the elementary school.
This district one?
District one, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, order of education expenses, um, we reduced our budget by fifteen hundred. Uh, the reason why is that we can be able to have that summer retreat that we're talking about this year without having to pay for it because we're going to be getting it through existing contract with the government of LaZo and Roffler without its continuity expense. So that would roughly be the expense we will carry. Um, reducing the district newsletter from, uh, three to two will save the district twenty-two hundred dollars. So instead of having three a year, one in the fall, one in the spring.
We'll put that in, uh, April, maybe it's another school district that does that.
Or playing with some of their information in the paper desk. We may be able to, that that would be a curse, small co, additional charge to them.
Yeah, but, I mean, I think if you, I, I, I don't know, it just might be something to look at.
Absolutely.
Savings that way. I should just put the two district newsletters.
The budget one has to be. Budget has to be mailed. That one has to be, so.
Okay, maybe the fall one.
The big one.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, number twelve, um, we are currently spending twenty-seven hundred dollars a year on public water. We are proposing to eliminate that. Um, there was going to be some tables purchased in the middle school and, uh, at the request of the teacher, um, she said that she could do without new tables this year and so that is a savings of forty-two hundred dollars. Um, the operations and maintenance budget, uh, there was ten, a ten dollar of contingency of fund in there and, uh, Gary May said that we'll figure out a way to work without it. Um, reduced refund of property taxes, um, this is a guesstimate. Um, we may or may not have that savings, but we're hoping for it. Obviously, you never know exactly what will happen with property taxes, but we feel this is a fairly conservative estimate and that we, we'll probably be okay with that. Um, we are going to move the, um.
Move, we will move some salaries into Title One, General One.
Okay, we're moving two salaries, two half-time salaries, uh, into Title One grant, which takes, basically takes it out of our budget and uses federal funds, um, to fund that and so that would be a savings of seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, we are going to be, uh, reallocating, um, existing personnel to fill a middle school, uh, special ed position, um, which the person will be no longer with us. Um, we are going to reduce the, uh, science teacher, uh, the point six full-time equivalent science teacher position and the, uh, to, and that, the courses will be rotated in the schedule so that, um, we can cover them with existing, with the existing faculty. Without that position, uh, that would save us thirty-one thousand. Um, we are going to, uh, be having an elementary school teacher, uh, retiring this year and, um, we will be reallocating existing personnel to cover that position at a savings of eighty-six thousand. Again, these are all proposals, obviously, just, um, we are not going to, um, refill a K through, K through twelve counseling secretary's position and redistribute that to existing secretaries, uh, and other clerical positions for savings of thirty-seven thousand dollars. The only reduction in, in contracted staff that we are proposing is to abolish one of the two eight-hour monitor positions in the elementary school. Um, the reason that we're doing that is not even primarily for budgetary reasons, but because with the capital improvements to the security situation in the elementary school, it really will not require the same two monitors that we've used for the last two years and so that would be a savings of twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, we're going to limit the, uh, conscious discipline training, uh, you know, outside the district training and, um, use, uh, school-trained staff to further the training within the school. So we're using, uh, school personnel to train other school personnel and that would be a savings of eight thousand dollars. Uh, the East Hill and High School T-shirts will be looking, we're suggesting that rather than funding that from the school budget, that we look to local businesses and, uh, other revenue sources and sponsors to underwrite that so that, this will get the T-shirts, but it will not be a budgetary cost to the school district. We are proposing to eliminate driver's ed. Um, it will not be provided either during the summer or the school year. Um, the SAT prep course, we're also looking, uh, proposing to eliminate, uh, the payment of the course or, uh, to charge a larger stipend. That's done.
No, we're fine.
We're cutting it, okay? I'm sorry.
I changed that, sorry.
I'm just reading.
I know, I missed that one.
Okay.
There's like twelve iterations of this paper.
We, um, when we looked at it, we only had, uh, between twenty and thirty students participating in that. And it's a pretty good.
And which one was that you just said?
The SAT prep course.
SAT prep.
Um, high school science supplies, we're proposing to reduce it by two thousand. This was a suggestion made by the science department and we welcomed it and thanked them for it. Um, violence for extracurricular trips, we had scheduled sixty-five hundred for that. We're proposing to reduce that to three thousand. Uh, we haven't gotten close even to spending even the three thousand, so we think that would still give, you know, we would still be subsidizing extracurricular trips and at this point it would not be, you know, telling people, no, you're not going to get any help. Uh, we haven't got close to using three thousand as of now. Um, on, uh, purchase of a new minivan, um, normally we purchase it outright, um, but what we're proposing is that, um, we purchase it over five years in installment payments year by year, um, because we get paid back over five years for the purchase. And again, this would just reduce the cash flow, you know, so it's fully ultimately the same money, but this year it'll save us eighteen thousand five hundred dollars in expenditures for that van, um, you know, we'll just pay, what we've asked is that they look for a low or zero financing, uh, zero percent financing for the van because we end up getting a little bit more than what the van actually costs from the state. So if we get either low or no financing cost, it'll be a wash. It will not be a cost to the district to finance it. So, um, that's the thing behind that. And so the total of all these savings is five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and it really, um, if we adopt this, it will make our budget workable for this year without any cuts in fi, either staff other than that one elementary position, um, monitor and, um, without any, uh, cuts in the academic program. So it's something that we've worked very hard for and are hopeful that we will be able to adopt this. That's the recommendation of the finance committee. So the floor is open for any other discussions before we get back to another question.
I just have a question, the driver's, how many total is that? The right driver's.
It's twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, it was twenties, a low twenties. I don't remember the exact number.
And then that was this summer and school year?
Um, no, because this is comparing it to last year's budget where we only have the school year in it.
I have a question about the Catholic Charities. Um, I was, and we might not be able to answer this right now, but I was just wondering how many students are being serviced and with our, um, uh, look at social emotional needs and how we're going forward with that, um, is that prudent for us to do something like that, to take that out of there? Do we have the abilities within our staff to be able to meet the needs of all of our students? So that's, that's what my question is.
So, can I answer?
Go, go right ahead.
So I think this will tell, this will, this will tell you the level of detail that we dug into these numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
That I'm going to be able to answer this question.
I was excited about it.
So we looked at the certifications that this person holds.
Okay.
And those certifications are limited and are not able to be used across the entire, um.
District.
Health, uh, social emotional means of our students. So all of our other people will be able to do this counseling, but this person can't do the other counseling. So for us, it was a better decision for us to do this and be able to absorb that with the other counselors that are certified to do more.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so let's get back to the, um, the question that Jen raised and let's have some discussion about that. I think we probably, it, let me first ask you, I think we're pretty much people on board. much people on board with everything else other than that issue that we will be discussing, maybe vote on separately, is that?
I'd say well, yeah. I can't count the hours that Mark and I, with Leah and Debbie have spent on this to that, this point, and the input of everybody in the district. I still, from a financial perspective of running businesses, I still think this is too long, but we need to cut more than this because of the, the sheet that Leah showed of us having no fund balance that we announced here. So, we, we've tried to do the best we could impacting the smallest number of people and not impacting academics to get us as close to a number that we thought could live with. It still could be a real big problem next year, right? So, I still think this is conservative from what our budget really is to be on so.
Okay, so any further discussion on, uh, on any of these items?
Are we, so you're, you're asking that we gotta vote on this today?
We have to adopt the budget today.
Well, I mean, we have to adopt the budget today and at this point, that summary budget sheet is, uh, includes these, these, these cuts.
We can adopt any budget we want, but we have to adopt the budget.
Yes. I, I just, yeah, I totally understand all of this, I just think that you're gonna have people who are going to look at the elimination of these two sports programs and then they're gonna compare it to volleyball, they're gonna be like, we have the same amount of kids in volleyball and we're not eliminating that, and so that's where I think there could be some, some backlash on that.
Aren't those more expensive sports?
They are.
And I hope my children being across country, they had a really, they were home really tiny.
Yes.
So, as far as students, missing classes, that was a big...
And according to the sh- sheet of participants that we'll look through later, there are a few more people in volleyball historically than these numbers.
Any other comments on that issue?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm struggling with both of those two, out of everything here, you have the golf, I mean, see, the scheme is significantly more of the eleven participants.
Some additional information that just might be helpful, the eleven participants in cross-country skiing, only three actually participated in the invitationals in the ski races. So while all eleven practiced, only three participated as competitors in cross-country events, cross-country ski events. So that's just, it's just a piece of information of the golf, golf, we have ten in, ten participants this year and we are graduating six. We may have some more people coming up, we don't know that yet, uh, fall sports signups is happening right now.
Is there, is there a way for us to look at combining that with, because I know court plane is a golf program, is there a way that we can look into possibly maybe instead of, you know, cutting that in half and, and allowing the kids to go participate because if we combine with court plane, at least the, the, the greens fees would be the same because it doesn't matter how many kids are out on, on the course, um, if we were to do that and then maybe, you know, do something about the, um, coach, you know what I mean? I just, I don't know. I don't know if that's something we can do.
So how do you justify, how do you justify keeping golf home?
Right, I don't, because I'm just suggesting...
Yeah, it is a less exp- I mean, I, it's less expensive.
But you could combine, you could probably combine with court plane, just like we do with cross-country in the fall, um, you know, so in, uh, football, I just, I just don't wanna see those kids miss out and it's a lifelong sport, it's something that if they learn how to play, they can play that, or they can ski, cross-country ski, or play golf, or whatever for the rest of their lives, um, and for, so here's the other thing that I think of with golf, golf, you don't need to be able to run, you don't need to be able to be, um, to throw a ball or, you know, slide on the court or anything like that, um, you don't need particular athletic prowess for that and so that helps some of those kids who are very awkward and with a lot of our kids coming up who are maybe not as athletically inclined because there's a lot of times spent on, um, electronics, this gives them a way to be able to do something athletic with the school, it's just a problem.
Well, one, one thing I just wanted to say about skiing, I mean, I'm, I agree with, I mean, I'm a skier, so I'm very much in favor of that, but one of the things that I think would be a possibility for cross-country skiing at least would be to do that as a club, as a club experience, just like we have downhill skiing.
Right.
And because with the transportation subsidy that we have, there's a number of free cross-country skiing, uh, venues in the area and I think that could be a wonderful experience and they could get the same experience and introduction to it that way, because, you know, it's not really a competitive sport in the way we participate.
Right, right.
So I, I think that to me is, is kind of a, an obvious, you know, choice and, and suggest that as a, as a substitute, you know, a replacement, as a club. I, I just, you know, in terms of golf, I, I hear you, but I still feel like if we're struggling to, to, you know, cut every possible thing that we can cut, I, I still feel like that's, that's part of that, um, you know, that wicked, so I, I still would be favorable to it, even though I, I understand what you're saying and, um, possibly if things improve in future years, we could, you know, we could really visit that, but at this point, I mean, I think we, the argument that we're making to everyone is that, you know, we're, we're looking for pennies here, that is where we can get them and, uh, because we're struggling to keep our academic and staff situation where it is and I just, um, I just feel that we should go, that should be part of that struggle.
I, I agree and we went to the level of detail and gave actions to actually do the same thing for our academic programs, how much it's costing us per student for our offerings because we don't have any luck and we're gonna have to make very hard decisions. And we have some programs that cost a lot of money per student engagement.
All right, so I, if this is an agreeable procedure, I would like to suggest maybe we just vote on the golf and cross-country, um, and then, what?
We can see your downwind budget.
Oh, consensus, excuse me. So just have...
You have to vote on the project, that's all you have to do.
All we have to do is adopt this.
Is there a way that we can look into, um, combining programs for golf? Because I think that would be at least, it would make me feel better as a board member that we're doing everything we can to keep these programs in place for these kids and if we can try and combine with court plane for that and like we do with other sports, then that would be acceptable to me, or something like that.
My disappointment, this is, we have section two committee, the fall sports merger date has passed, you couldn't put a merger at this point.
I'm sorry, you...
You could not put a fall merger at the fall, the merger passed, the date has passed for all of it. And cable version. What's that? The other thing I would, the other thing I would give as pieces of data is the athletic director was, uh, spoken with about this and supported this.
And the coaches too.
It's not, it's not just us deciding what...
Coaches too.
We've gone out, did the financial analysis in what we thought was an equitable way in terms of how much it's costing by experience and then that was also given to the athletic director and head coaching, but they were...
Uh, I was gonna just raise one more question. If we're looking at athletics, um, I know that schedules don't always have to be maxed out and athletic directors have some flexibility on picking up extra games and where those extra games are, have you talked to Mr. Dunn about those as well?
For what sports?
All, basically most of your sports, not all, because I think you're, you have, you have X amount of, like, league games.
Right, yes.
Then the athletic directors have other games that they pick up.
Correct, correct, yes.
You mean to reduce travel costs?
You can reduce travel costs and say, any extra games you have must be within...
Yes.
Neighborhood, you know, it's, it's, it's tough because sometimes you have...
Right.
Games that you've historically done over years, uh, and then sometimes if it's a budget crunch, sometimes you don't even pick those games up, so at that point you're not paying transportation, you're paying a hundred, hundreds of dollars in fees for officials. So if you did that across the board, it's not gonna be a ton of savings, but you, it potentially could be a couple thousand dollars.
So you're suggesting elimination of those, so for example, we do that already.
Yeah, potentially, I'm, I'm saying have we looked at that and seen...
We did not look at that, so the example I would give, just to give some clarity, would be in basketball, we'll, we'll play Cherry Valley, we play Dogsville or Little Falls, some teams that are local for those extra games.
Yeah.
So your suggestion is have we looked at, do we have to play those, can we reduce those, and what's the budgetary impact?
Potentially, it doesn't have to be, yeah, it could be, it could be all, all sports.
Right, I'm just picking, that just came to my head, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that, you, you, you got it, or what you could do is host it, well, I don't know if that would save you money, but sometimes you can host a tournament where you can get a few games in rather than travel out.
And the kids still get the experience.
Kids still get the experience, or you have inter, I don't wanna say interleague play, but you, you, you know, I don't know, there's, there's, there's other suggestions or other things to look at. Or like, you know, scrimmages, well, scrimmages probably aren't a big thing. I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm looking at, at other ways you can potentially do it.
We can find out.
You know, and I don't know what the savings would be if you, I'm going to a different thing, but the, um, you know, the newsletters, that might be a savings as well, that one in, in, uh, yeah, that could be a couple thousand dollars. Yeah.
The other thing I would say on this, I mean, our, our coach budget is a hundred thousand dollars for a little district playoffs, that's a lot of money. We have more sports than is to allow in terms of golf and, and we're a little district. I agree, conceptually, we're giving people as many options, but it has to be something that's sustainable and I think we offer far more than we're capable of sustain.
Okay, is there anything else, we have to move along to the budget?
Another question. Is this a way to, to contribute and assist drivers? Is there a way of doing a, a contribution to that work? In the, in the past, what we have done is used a sliding scale for contributions towards drivers, or towards driver's ed, so that helped offset some of the costs, but does not help offset the total.
But, but we can only do that if you go to the summer.
Correct, if we did, if we did the summer, over, I mean, if we did summer only, you could do that, if you offer it summer and school year, you can't charge one and then the other, then you can't charge it off.
And what happens is when we go to the summer, our costs go way up because to offer it during the school day, it was part of the teacher's load, so that cost isn't anywhere. Okay, and when you go to summer, it's not part of the teacher's load, it's all extra service.
And we're... We're playing, we're playing. We didn't have driver's ed last summer, that's where some students chose, chose, chose to go.
All right, anything else? Okay, um, shall we get, take the motion to, um, agree on the budget for nineteen twenty, twenty-two million, five hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for the other motion. And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stand? The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next thing we have is provosts. Minutes, uh, for the fifth, thirteenth, nineteenth, and twenty-eighth of March, I would suggest we, everyone was at the first three, so I would suggest we could go together, oh, first of all, do you want a consent agenda? Is there anything in here that you not want to put on a consent agenda?
I had some comments that I thought we should change, so I don't know how that plays into this.
All right, so we'll do the, we'll do the minutes separately and I guess volleyball for you, you do that separately as well?
No, I was, it was just more or less just a, a comment because I just feel that, um, Mr. Dunn completed a sign-up for volleyball for fall two thousand and nineteen, there's eleven kids there and that's why I'm making the point of eliminating golf with ten kids and there's eleven there and I just don't...
Okay, so, um, so that being said, um, let's, let's take out the minutes, we'll do that separately and then take the motion for a consent agenda from B through J. Second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so minutes, March fifth was, um, when we were considering superintendent questions, um, any comments on that one? Uh, no, do, oh, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Motion, motion picks up.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, next, we leave the thirteenth.
I had a comment on this one.
Can I have a motion first?
Yes, I'm sorry, I made a motion.
Second?
Jen?
Second.
Okay.
Go ahead. So my comment was underneath the student report, it just says bullying and suicide awareness and I think that for somebody from the outside reading that, I think we need to put something in a blank after that, like, both bulliness and suicide awareness training was covered or something, that's just really hanging and I don't think it's going to trail.
Okay.
Any suggestion?
Hold on, let me, hold on, I might have, I, I might have something...
I think it was something that they participated in.
Well, those were, now, those were her suggestions, that, that, that's what...
That they're really offered.
That we offer training.
Self-awareness training.
And I think what we did was we...
Okay, I'll add that, I can add that, we're in agreement.
And I think what we did was turn that back over to the principal's cabinet to talk about how to make that happen.
So those are what she suggested, self-bullying, you know, questions.
So maybe suggest investigating bullying and suicide awareness training.
Training, okay, I'll add training after that, okay.
Let me, I have, so, other programs can be discussed in the principal's cabinet.
So if I add training, that's what her suggestion was, training and that, your principal's cabinet.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, on the nineteenth, we have a superintendent related, uh, special executive session. No, no.
Yes.
Does any motion please?
Yes.
How, Sally?
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we have the twenty-eighth. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any question, discussion?
Um, yes, there were some things left, um, incomplete on this one.
I'm sorry, I guess there were.
Legislative update, advocacy, communications feedback. So I don't think we can adopt this one.
I'll, I'll add that, yeah, I mean, I'll add it to the next, I'll move these to the next meeting.
So we actually do what we can.
Okay, so a motion to table?
Yes, motion to table, several tables.
Table, if anyone, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I will finish it up.
Nope. And I abstained. So what's my, okay. If moving along, budget transfers. Any comments there? And, sheet bills? Anything there?
I have a couple questions.
Go ahead.
The fiscal advisors and meeting, twenty-three hundred?
And marketing.
Marketing, I'm sorry, yes.
That's who handles our, like, our debt service, they come up with all those schedules for us. And our bonds, they come up with all those for us.
Okay, so that's a financial planning service for the district?
Yes.
Is that paid by, do we have a contract, or is that as needed?
It's as needed.
We pay them, or what?
As needed.
The next one I have, C, the Amazon?
That's our Amazon account.
So is that, is that just a general, anybody can charge anything to that account? So we still itemize what that is?
Yeah, purchase orders are still a process. Yeah, the approvals.
Upstate cerebral palsy, are they providing services for us?
Special unphasing list.
I assumed, but I didn't know if they did that. And then the last one I had was Raptor Technologies.
That's our security system. When we go into the offices, if you get any of the badges.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
That's the key, that's the key part of illegal.
What is, what is our time limit for our internet services? So, okay, our internet service is for all of the buildings? For the lines, the physical lines?
Lines in the building? Do we pay them a fee for lines in the building to maintain it?
Or they do the internet ser, they're our internet service providers, so it's aligned in the provision of the internet.
It's to the building.
It's to the building, yeah.
It's to the building, so we're not, we're not paying a maintenance fee if something goes wrong in the lines in the building.
No, they're responsible, we get it to the building, we take care of it.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that was, I was just wondering.
Okay, then moving along to the treasurer's report, any questions there?
I don't know. Leah, it seemed like some of the interests are not consistent. Are some of them still not on the new plan?
Some of the, like, the money market's going to be higher than the regular checking accounts. The checking accounts, like, there's much interest.
Oh, so they're not all still invested in the same thing?
No, they have different rates.
All right, got it. I was, I had the other expectation that it's all on the new plan, so thank you.
I, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, I keep doing math, but, um, what I- But I looked at it, I mean, it's nice to see a couple thousand dollars as interest as opposed to, you know, two dollars and twenty-two cents.
It was.
But when I did, but when I did do the math, we had been talking about one and a half to two percent, and it came out to less than one percent. And I was wondering if there's some issue there.
On what account?
It's three million dollar one.
I'll just write that later.
I'll get to it, just a sec. Just a sec, I'll be there.
Because the first page is the data, so basically that happens, the money market, the interest.
Yeah, this, yeah.
So that's the interest in us?
That's the one, that's one of the ones we put in.
That's one of the higher ones.
Yeah, but what I'm wondering about is why did it go down to, you know, seven tenths of one percent as opposed to one and a half to two percent? Is that a variable interest rate?
I'll have to look at that, yeah, I'll look at that.
I was just surprised, because last time I checked, it was one point eight or something, and now-
And they do change, so, yeah.
But I was just like, just to be clarified.
Yeah, I can look it up.
Because we could be making four thousand instead of two thousand, that would do even better. Any other questions on the treasurer's report? I just am addicted to math.
You're addicted to interest rates.
Yeah. Okay, the contractor agreements, any questions on any of those?
Uh, yes.
Which one?
Um, it's principles that were in both of them. So the first question I had is, um, for dispute resolution, it xed the box of court versus the other options. And that was on everyone that I knew. Is that something that we actually want? Whether it is a dispute, we want to have to go to court rather than arbitration or something else?
And that was, that, these were all vetted by our attorneys?
In general, you get a much more fair and objective hearing. This mediation, depending on mediators, would be very skewed toward the contractor. It's what the experience has been, in my understanding.
Um, arbitration's not the same as mediation, but, um-
I didn't, I meant mediation.
And usually, the arbitrator has to be agreed to by both parties. The difference is a whole other cost, that's why I was asking. Because if you have to go to court, you're laying a month just to go. You know, now, our legal contract might cover, I don't know if it would cover these or not.
Yes, that's part of the fee. And again, our legal counsel looked at all these contracts, and these are standard contracts.
Oh, I know they were standard, but it's a box, and you get to choose which one, so. Okay. The other thing that I had a question about is, there's a penalty in there on us for not paying a three percent interest. But I didn't find a penalty anywhere where they're not coming through on there.
Any other questions?
No. No, I might not, I might not have found it, but all of them had a three percent penalty for us in terms of payment. But I didn't see anything that is penalty on their side if they don't come through on time or anything.
Do we also have any of these contracts? All right, so do we need to, do we, do we need to go and prove that to see?
Yes, because they're starting working.
Oh, I did have another thing, but I didn't write on my notes. I also didn't find anything in there about the badge, which we talked about. And that might be in the documents that's referred to in each case.
Yes, it is.
I just wanted to make sure that's in there somewhere.
Yes, so at our construction meeting this past week, one day, we had the construction management firm, all of the contractor and subcontractors have submitted driver's license of all of their workers. They're all being run through the Raptor system, and they will check in every day to get them. They also have a requirement of having, being bad, their own badges every day, but we're going to check everybody first. We also ask, we also have the requirement that each contractor does a back, a more thorough background check, that provides evidence of that to us for anybody who's on site doing work.
Thank you. So Mark, I understand the groupment. So I don't know what our latitude is here, but I would, I would be, I would be okay if we approved them, but Debbie has to go and ask the legal counsel about those questions.
The penalty for the litigation question and the penalty for contractors, if they don't-
Whatever the legal counsel gives us, I'm fine with it. I just saw those as two.
Section five point two point one of our final payment, it talks about the unpaid balance of the contract, shall be made by the owner to the contractor when the contractor is fully performed the contract, except for the responsibility to direct one and to satisfy the requirements if they reach beyond the final payment.
So it could be our attorneys looking at that as a holdback, and that's sufficient.
Right, we did clarify.
It would be a punchless thing to have.
Correct.
Well, depends on how they're interpreting that, right?
That's true.
Are you okay with?
Yeah, I'm fine, I just want to make sure that that's checked, right? That we're not hanging ourselves out.
I'll find that out, and I'll send it out, any information I can.
Okay, anything else on the contracts? All right, then we're up to transportation requests, any questions on that today?
I have one, sorry.
All right?
The first two are going to Fort Plaine, is that not out of our district?
No, they're within fifteen miles, it's a private school.
Okay.
And we provide transportation for private schools within fifteen miles.
Question about-
Within fifteen miles. Within fifteen miles.
Even if it's outside our district.
Yes.
And there may be some more coming in from the Amish. It's just Wayne, this was one of Wayne's things that wasn't on his calendar. So, but the ones that will be coming in are ones that we've already, that are included this year.
Already?
Yes, so he's put that in his tickler for next year. I'm told they'll put it in their March preferences. Make sure he gets them.
Okay, anything else on transportation? And we need to validate recertification, anything there, question? Okay, then the continuation of combined programs, Fort Plaine volleyball, any questions?
So, I'm sorry, I have one question. I know it was stated in the text that Mr. Dunn had made that. But it looked like it was, came from Fort Plaine, and I just wanted to make sure that we actually had Canjo make that, because it's signed by the Fort Plaine person.
Right, because Fort-
Well, because they're the host school, so we have to provide them the information.
So my, my question is, is Canjo happy with how the merged volleyball has worked out? And who's given us that feeling?
Honestly, I have not heard anything, one way or another, about, we know this. We know that we wouldn't have had it if we didn't merge the Fort Plaine. And that's how we, because we had lost a coach, and we could not find a coach. So in working with the families, so as we were going through this process last year, we worked in kitting with families, so this was how we could make the sport into mutual. Honestly, I didn't hear anything at all, one good or bad.
Because I remember when this came up the first time, and looking at the junior high numbers and the high school numbers, we have an extreme drop-off of participation. And when it first came up, I don't remember that being the case, it was just that our numbers were smaller. So it made me question, is there some dynamic that's going on here that maybe people in our district aren't happy about?
Not for, I, not that this customer might question.
That was my other question.
Also, are you asking that to query?
I, I just think it'd be wise for us to at least know that coaching players from our district are happy with this, because it seems like our participation is dropping like a rock.
Okay, so let's ask for that question to be raised, and we can get it for. All right, anything else on that? All right, so motion was made and seconded for consent agenda for B through J, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Stay, okay, let's pass. The last one? Um, there's no other good business, so I'm taking the motion to the executive session. All in favor?
Aye.